Alright, everybody, it's five o'clock, we're gonna get started here. We're gonna call and order this joint meeting between the Grand Forks City Council and the Park Board, the Board of Park Commissioners. It is Tuesday, May 30th at 5:00 PM. With that, why don't we get a roll call, please, Marine?
Sure, I will start with City Council members, Weigle.
Here.
Kloski, here. Wether. Munske, here. Kabami.
Here.
Sandy.
Here.
Abe.
Here.
And then the Board of Park Commissioners, Starro.
Here.
Newser.
Here.
Orfalamu.
Here.
Graff.
Here.
McIntyre.
Here.
All the Park District units, you got the full roster and we're one short, so you guys are winning already with our team on this one anyways. Just welcome, and we got a room full of people, I think this is great. We'll get through the presentation, we'll open it up for a conversation, but just really excited to see this many, you know, people in the room and have an interest in this facilities, these facilities, and seeing where they can go and having the conversation. So, I thank George, I thank Tim, obviously for everyone else for being here from the Park District and helping take this on. This is a good partnership and we're hoping to make this happen one way or another. So, you got any opening remarks that you wanna make, Tim?
Well, no, just to echo what you're saying, Mr. Mayor, obviously the Park District is very excited to work with the city with a project like this. You know, we've looked at some numbers, we've looked at different things along the way, and I don't think any one entity could get this done by itself. So, with the two groups working together, along with many, many others, very excited with where we're at and very excited about the future and look forward to where this leads us.
Alright, with that, Tom, we'll kick it over, I know you guys got this choreographed, we'll get through the presentation.
We're gonna have George and Pat start us off from the Park District and our consultant here, just turn off the first part of the presentation.
Does everybody have a copy, and then we've got screens around too, everybody gotta put up on the screen, so, alright.
Yeah, very good. Just maybe a quick recap, it's been a few months since we last got together, wanted to maybe touch base real quick on kinda how we got to this point. Park District did an RFP, we ultimately selected Barry Dunn, I'll choose Paddle Tool, he's with Barry Dunn, we went through a process with the RFP selecting it. Barry Dunn's done a number of projects throughout the state and North Dakota, they're very big across the country for these types of projects, nationally recognized. So, we were happy to work with them, pleased with the process and we're able to finish line as far as our feasibility study goes. So, with that, I'll turn it over to Pat, and if you want to choose your team here as well.
Great. But George said I'm Paddle Tool, I was Barry Dunn, we were the lead on the project. We have, we assume, our sub consultants, I'm gonna let them introduce themselves, we've got Zach from VRS and Steve from WTI, so Zach.
Hello, everyone, good evening, my name's Zach Beazik, I'm with Barker Rinker Sea Cat Architecture. We are based in Denver, Colorado, and do these sort of projects all over the country. Looking forward to sharing any information we can tonight.
And likewise, this is Steve Crocker, I'm the Director of Sports Swimming with Water Technology, we're based in Beaver Dam, Wisconsin. We are on this project, we are the aquatic consultant.
Thanks, guys. I thought we'd get the same PowerPoint that we showed last time I was in town, gonna skip through, do some recaps here just on the buildings and then get to what we didn't have last time. And that is some of the costing, particularly the ONM costing. So, on the slide that we have up there now, this is basically the pool expansion, forty-two thousand square feet, main level's thirty-four thousand five hundred. Contains lobby and entry, locker rooms, fifteen hundred square foot of multipurpose party slash rooms, seventeen thousand square foot of a stretch twenty-five pool that you see there. It would have ten to fifteen twenty-five yard swim lanes, ten twenty-five meter swim lanes, one six-foot movable bulkhead, room for one meter and three meter diving, and room for a ceiling suspended drop-down ninja crosscourse in the deep area. Also have, as part of this, attaching two choice, we are moving the, we're closing the slides to make them year-round, which they are not now, adding four thousand square foot of support spaces for just this portion of it, relocating childcare and relocating the outdoor playground. Then on the mezzanine level, basically it's seventy-five hundred square foot, thirteen hundred of lounge and observation deck, big enough for four thousand, or for six hundred spectators, four thousand square feet, concessions room and spectator restrooms. Yeah, now we're gonna go to page number, oh, page twenty-five. Page twenty-five and twenty-six in the same fashion. This is the indoor sports concept, two-hundred-and-eight thousand square feet, the main level is a hundred-and-fifty-four thousand square feet, eighteen hundred square foot of administration space, we have a ten-thousand square foot vendor space right now for an indoor golf simulator that is willing to do the food services for the building on a profit share. The big components, eight thousand square foot indoor turf, it's the size of one high school football field or soccer field that can be also split up and curtained for six smaller soccer fields, three smaller soccer fields, or a large soccer field and two softball or baseball fields. And the baseball and softball are not like game fields, they're practice fields, so there won't be seating, there won't be home run fence, it'll be, picture them on either side of a football field, taking in food or what have you. Five thousand square foot of sports training, five thousand square foot of an indoor sprint track, locker rooms and storage, and then there's a thirty-two thousand square foot indoor gymnasium that has four high school-sized basketball courts that can be split into eight, under eight youth basketball courts, or four high school volleyball courts, or twelve badminton courts. On the mezzanine, which is basically the next floor, fifty-four thousand square feet, fifteen thousand square foot for pickleball courts, so we've got eight pickleball courts dedicated up there, twenty-five thousand square foot indoor playground space, twenty-three hundred square foot lounge space, elevated jog-walk track that would be three and a half laps per mile, five thousand square foot for spectator seating where you can look over either side into the courts or the turf, twenty-six hundred square foot restrooms, and four square foot of storage up there. So that's kind of recap of, it's the same as what we presented last time we were here, now let's go to page thirty.
Pat, if you could just take a second, why don't you just talk briefly on how you got to these types, these facilities, the user groups that you talked to, the process just to get there, could you give us a quick overview of what you did to get to the facilities looking like this?
I can, and I'm gonna cheat a little bit, go up to the front of my shoes.
Just, I know there's a lot of new people, and I was, I've slept since then, so I don't remember how many groups.
We had nine stakeholder-focused groups, I was here for a week, Zach and Steve were with me. Then we did a, one seminar or summary webinar with seventy-seven participants where we got input from those folks. So, one hundred and fifty-two total participants, what we would consider stakeholders, people that are gonna use this type of facility that gave us their input on when they'd use it, how they'd use it, what they would need, those types of things. We also did an onsite web survey called Social Pinpoint, and some of the questions were pretty simple of, you know, would you rather have an indoor aquatics or a turf or courts? And the scores were three hundred and sixteen to two forty-nine to one seventy, so I hope you wanna follow me on the, we're on page six if you wanna pull those up. I wanna just look at how some of those pies split out, so a pretty even split between those. Then the next slide, page seven, we asked, would you rather have one or the other or both, and the red is both. So we heard loud and clear, even the swimmers want the indoor facility and the sports people want the indoor aquatic setup. So the other thing we did, I go on to page eight, we sent out paper surveys, we got, we sent out eighty-five hundred postcards asking people to fill out the paper or to go for a one-time statistically valid online survey. We had eleven hundred and eight completed, which is great, we then opened it up to everybody in the public, and we had six hundred and fifty more fill them out. And we keep them separate, but we compare them, and they compared within one or two percentage points of the other. So we felt like we had a pretty good feeling of how your community felt. Okay, I'm trying to skip through the good parts. One question we asked, seventy-five percent of the invite responses responded, they would probably or definitely support the lower center sales tax extension in order to support this complex, which almost eighty percent, we felt pretty good about. Then we just basically got into these different features, so we, based on what we heard through our focus group, we posted those or posed those questions to test those on the survey, and what you see here is really what came out of that. And that one slide that I showed where courts more important than turf than this, that's about how the survey came out too. If there, if I had to put them in order, it would be turf.
I think that's, you know, I just, it was a long process, a lot of input from the community to get to where you are today. I just think that's a important highlight as you look at, how did those facilities, how did you decide what to put there? Your expertise for these facilities across the nation, but input from our community is what ultimately drove them there over many months.
Absolutely.
Why don't you pick up then where you were gonna go?
Alright, page thirty. The last time we met, we had not started the process for the operations and maintenance budget, which is, is, I'm sorry, the capital budget, this is Zach's slide, one thing we did was, we, everything else that we had done and had seen in comparison was in two thousand and twenty-three terms. What Zach put together for us last time was trying to project a couple years down the road, which is almost impossible, particularly post-COVID. So these figures are, so everything matches from ONM, from, from the capital in two thousand and twenty-three terms, which I think is what you're looking at in your funding sources anyway right now. So, Zach, I'm gonna let you take this slide.
Sounds good. Hopefully everyone can hear me. Yeah, a quick summary of this slide, the columns represented in green are for the indoor sports facility, the column in blue is for the aquatics edition. And so you can see, we'll start with the indoor sports facility, we had two concepts we developed, both were two-hundred-and-eight thousand square feet approximately, the real difference is we're looking at cost relative whether there was a indoor golf vendor space or whether that would be repurposed for another use. So the prices and the numbers are overall similar, there's about a million and a half, two million dollar difference. But the breakdown here shows estimated costs for facility hard costs of around sixty million for the indoor sports facility, which comes, you know, in today's two thousand and twenty-three, May two thousand and twenty-three numbers, about two hundred and ninety dollars, ninety-five dollars a square foot. Site costs are estimated around three million. We've included a contingency of about six and a half million, which is approximately ten percent. And then there's estimated soft costs around ten million, which include things like FFNE, owner's wrap, pre-con services, arc engineering fees, aquatic fees, cap fees, survey, geotack, those sort of things. And then there's some notes below of elements that were included in the estimate. The blue column represents the aquatics addition at the existing Choice Health and Fitness Facility. This addition is shown as a forty-two thousand square foot facility addition, as Pat mentioned previously, like estimated hard costs around twenty-one and a half million for the building alone, another just over a million, one point one, one point two million for the site costs. Again, we've included twelve and a half percent contingency, knowing that it's an aquatics facility, so just under three million for contingency, and then just shy of four million, three point eight million for soft costs. So overall project costs for the indoor facility, indoor sports facility around eighty million, and for the aquatics addition, just under thirty million, twenty-nine and a half million in May two thousand and twenty-three numbers.
Quick question to you, Zach, when we look at site costs, how should we think about that? Does that, would that include land acquisition as part of that, I mean, these are both publicly owned, or is that other site costs as far as excavating and preparation, that type of thing?
It, it, these numbers do not include any sort of land acquisition costs, they're assumed that that is a cost that's not part of it. So, if there is additional cost that would need to, for land acquisition that would need to be included, or if you were looking at comparing to another site, that, you know, cost would have to be compared equally.
Thank you.
These costs do include, as I mentioned, these footnotes below, that, you know, a spray park at the existing Choice Health Facility would be relocated. You know, we're including at the indoor sports facility that the existing BMX track would be relocated, that cost is included as well. And for the indoor facility, the difference in the golf and vendor's non-golf space, don't, they include a core and shell fit up, and they do not include the cost of the vendor's indoor needs, so those are just a few footnotes included down below.
Thanks, Zach. Okay, go to slide eight thirty-three, the ONM cost, this is for the indoor sports facility. You can see, broken down, these are summaries, we've got line item budgets in our report. This is the summary, personnel, a little over half a million dollars, contractual services, eight hundred and thirty-six thousand, commodities, ninety-three thousand, total expenses, one point four three six million, revenues, it's very highly rental facility, so eight hundred thousand dollars in rentals, three hundred and fifty thousand in programs, twenty thousand in concessions, total revenue of one point one six eight million, or a net minus two sixty-eight, oh nine zero, or eighty-one percent cost recovery. So the two hundred and sixty-eight and two thousand and three numbers is what we would project would be the subsidy. And then the, I guess I skipped one, John, eight, or eight thirty-two, indoor aquatics facility, personnel, three hundred and thirty-two thousand, four seventy-seven, contractual, almost four hundred thousand, commodities, thirty-four five, or total expense, seven hundred and sixty-three thousand, oh forty-one. Revenues, additional memberships, almost fifty thousand, guest passes, twenty-eight thousand, programs, two hundred and eleven thousand, rentals, two hundred and fifty thousand, total revenue, five hundred and thirty-eight thousand, for a net minus two twenty-four, one sixty-eight, cost recovery seventy-one percent. On this one, this only includes additional costs on top of the aquatic segments already there. So, for example, the personnel using the same infrastructure for aquatics manager and head guard and all that stuff, so it's mostly lifeguards. We did put an additional entrance for all swim meets, for swim practices to come in off that other end and add an attendant there. So, this is only added, the added expense to personnel wall up in this. Okay, we're gonna go on to page thirty-six.
And so on, page eighty-six, options to consider, so some capital cost numbers that we're estimating, we're looking at potential funding sources with the sales tax being an option, you know, looking at, there's probably gonna be a deficit on there as it sits right now. Our goal would be to, you know, try and find some additional funding, find a way to make it build it the way the community wanted it. That's what the survey results came in at, that's the way the focus groups led to, so trying to find that additional funding source, trying to find a way to make it work. I think that would be the primary goal of the Park District and the city is to make that happen, so that's the first one on there. We also wanted to just address, you know, if other decisions were made, such as downsizing, you know, reducing the scope of the project, the building size, the amenities, basically if you took eighty percent of both facilities or something, something of that sorts, you know, there are consequences, there are downsides to that, you know, some goals would be that it's not what the community asked for, you know, it's eighty percent of what the community asked for, it would be, you know, some user groups might be eliminated altogether in that type of scenario, and they had needs as well. Also, there'd be, if you reduce the scope, some of the meets, some of the tournaments that we've talked about, trying to host, you know, those, those might not be able to happen if we're at eighty percent of a facility. The last one there is just the phasing, I'd build, to build one maybe facility right away and then build a second one somewhere down the road. Downside for that is, you know, there's no, there won't be any funding recognized today, there might not be something down the road here, so. Building something today, and again, you have the user groups, the stakeholders that would have to wait, I guess, because it wouldn't be built suddenly, can you say? So, those were some of the options, and by no means is that all the options, but some of the things we wanted to consider as we're looking our way through this feasibility report.
I wanna interject some things here too, based on some of these options, what, another thing I think you give up if you don't build this is the ability to grow into these. You're two years out before you open the doors, the ONM I did at about a seventy percent, give or take, capacity, which was built on, and I'll commend these guys, the whole department for spending the time to sit down with these, with the user groups, again and again, so probably like three times, how many hours will you, what do you need, and that's what's in here. Then what's in here is what the going rates are kinda in your region, you know, Fargo's doing it, and looking at West Fargo pool rates, all that stuff. So we don't, we, it's called projections, we can't guarantee that because they told us they needed extra number hours a week that they can come up with a runoff fee to do that. They also have two years to jump on board and figure, and help figure this out. But I just, I've seen a lot of communities that do these options and build it, and a year later they're at capacity and there's nowhere to go, and there's not enough courts to hold beats or whatever. So, that's just my two cents worth of trying to get what your community asked for. I have no horse in this race, I'm not pitching this for any reason, other than it is what we heard and it's accurate, and I think it's what you need.
Mayor, next part, Marine was gonna go through some of the financials.
Alright. Julie first on the economic.
You can skip me, you can.
We see, we see obviously ONM losses, I think the pool was probably even better than the lodges were thinking, as far as the cost recovery is seventy percent. So that was, but we need to hear some good economic numbers from Julie to tell them all this makes sense.
Because it'd be shocking that I would be in favor of something like this, right? So I have some numbers to share with you all, if any of you have any questions or want some information sent to you at the following this meeting, please don't hesitate to email me because I'm gonna rattle off a whole pile of numbers. What I did is I got some numbers on the national level and the local to share with you. So I went to the Sports Events and Tourism Association for the national data. This is an organization for sports commissions, destinations, event owners, industry partners, so we've been a member of this organization for many, many years. They did, their last state of the industry report was two thousand and twenty-one, and two thousand and twenty-two is now done. But I think that two thousand and twenty-one is interesting because it shows how much, even still during COVID, sports rebounded, or other markets, obviously in two thousand and twenty-one, still very much struggled and continue to even struggle now. Sports was rebounding pretty well. So, in two thousand and twenty-one, three point seven billion dollars were spent in tournament operations, thirty-six billion in sports traveler spending, and twelve point nine billion in tax revenue. There was a total of ninety-eight, ninety-one point eight billion in total economic impact. As I mentioned, the sector rebounded pretty quickly in two thousand and twenty-one, there were a hundred and seventy-five million sports travelers in two thousand and twenty-one, which was only two point six percent lower than two thousand and nineteen, and two thousand and nineteen was a high mark year. So, that, I think that really shows something, people travel for their kids, people travel for sports, and you can't zoom in on a tournament. Well, I suppose you can watch it that way, but you can't participate that way. Another point, local governments collected three point three billion in two thousand and twenty-one, so this is good for our tax base. On an average, now this doesn't necessarily mean that it was this way in Grand Forks, but on an average, about thirty-two events were canceled or delayed in two thousand and twenty because of COVID, and, and only eleven in two thousand and twenty-one. So obviously, they were coming back. And just regarding some stats on destination support as a community, what we do for these events, approximately eighty percent of destinations paid mid-fees in two thousand and twenty-one, and ninety-two percent at the level of budget that we're at. And that's something very common that we will do, it's called our enticement fund, and we will offer sponsorships in a bid process, whether it's a convention or a tournament. And approximately sixty percent, regardless of budget, offered some type of local event grant, which again, we do, we partner with the city of Grand Forks on our event funding program. And this is interesting, sixty percent of destinations are now doing state-of-play tournaments. And I'm sure many of you are familiar with those because we've all had to do them with our kids, even if they're close by. I've had to stay in Fargo sometimes for a tournament when we could have easily driven back and forth because it's a state-of-play tournament. So that definitely impacts our local residents, if we're going out to these other communities and not getting these tournaments here, and then you add the state of play, those communities are even generating more tax dollars and more economic impact. A little bit on the local data, so Sports ETA, the organization I was just talking about, partners with Destinations International for the sports module of the Economic Impact Calculator that we use. So we have three different modules that we use, one for conventions, one for festivals and events, and then one for sports. So Sports ETA is directly involved with the data and the research of that calculator. And this, about fifty-four percent of destinations use this calculator, so it's very commonly used in our industry and very well-respected. So I'll talk a little bit about the direct spend, which are those actual hard costs, and then the economic impact, which includes the indirect and the induced cost, the multipliers. So obviously that number's going to be a little bit larger, people sometimes like that direct number better because you can actually look at it and say, that's what was spent on lodging, that's what was spent on dining, that's what was spent on retail. So one I like to talk about, and I think we do often, is the Junior Grand M basketball tournament, which I'm sure almost everybody in this room is familiar with that tournament, kinda takes over the community the weekend that it's here. We just updated our numbers, we had a report, now after the tournament, we got the actual numbers and that the impact actually went up. So the direct spend, the impact was about three point five million, and the economic impact was five point three million. So that's for one weekend, a lot of kids and parents in our town using, I believe, every single court that's available to them. Another report we receive is a weekly occupancy, we have a monthly occupancy report from STAR that we've received for years and years and years. Now we've added a weekly report, so by day we can look at occupancy numbers. So the Friday of that tournament, our occupancy was at eighty-four percent, which is significant, and Saturday it was eighty-three percent. Also an average daily rate of a hundred and twenty-seven dollars and a hundred and thirty-four dollars respectively on those days. So that's just for the lodging, and then you add in the taxes that are coming in on that lodging. And also, you know, obviously we care about that Canadian market. In two thousand and twenty-two, when Junior Grand M first came back, they had six Canadian teams, this year they have forty-one. So we have a market there for a lot of these events, obviously if it's a North Dakota state event or a state regional event, something like that, we can't depend on those Canadian teams, but there's so many tournaments, we can really depend on those Canadian teams. And now with the requirements of the border lessening, you no longer need the vaccination, the COVID vaccination to get into the US from Canada, hopefully that will continue to help, if anybody could do something about the exchange rate, we'd be open. Just a few others, in two thousand and twenty-two, we hosted- Uh, just a few others. In twenty twenty-two, we hosted the North Dakota State Class E Girls Basketball Tournament. Uh, that's always a big one, uh, just under a million in direct spend and one point four million in economic impact. Uh, the North Dakota State Swimming Championships for eleven and up. Uh, again, about forty, four hundred and thirty-two thousand direct spend, six hundred and forty-nine economic impact. Uh, the twenty twenty-three state, uh, excuse me, not state soccer tournament, the, uh, Greater Grand Forks Soccer Tournament. Uh, and we're projecting about a million in direct spend and one point six in economic impact. Of course, that hasn't happened yet, so it's based on numbers that they provided on their history. Uh, and same coming up, we have the Grand Cities Lacrosse Tournament, uh, two hundred and fifty-seven thousand for direct spend and three hundred eighty-eight for economic impact. So, and just, just a couple of other notes to point out. Um, of course, again, I don't think that there's a lot I'm saying that you probably aren't already aware of, but youth sports tend to produce a much higher economic impact. Uh, because families travel with those kids. It's not just the parents and the siblings, but a lot of times it's grandparents, aunts and uncles. Uh, even if they're in a town, they're all going out to eat and, and doing things together. So it really does generate those, those dollars. Uh, I mentioned we're in a great location to capitalize on those Canadian teams. Uh, and I'd also like to mention, you know, we're talking about the economic impact side of these events, but there's also some of those smaller, maybe national or international events that we can go after that might not have such an economic impact, but they certainly can bring an impact to our community image and, and shine a light on our community. So I don't, it, it's, it's not good to ignore those as well. Economically, they might not bring in the dollars, but they can certainly do a lot for us in the way of public relations and putting our community on a national, international stage. Uh, I've said it before, Todd brought it up today and I'll say it again, a vibrant community with events and activities brings people to live and brings people to travel here. So we've got to keep things going for people to want to come here. Uh, a couple of other points, uh, we've noticed particularly this spring, a lot of the local sports groups or um, the local groups have struggled with their season because of the weather. Uh, so again, if we can have longer seasons and produce more events, that would be impactful to our community. And I'd just like to say, our organization is here. We continue to provide funding, services. We have staff dedicated to sports and events, the sports market specifically. Uh, we're working with the Park District and the Alares, or excuse me, the schools and the Alara Center on a new group to go after more of these, uh, state athletic events. And so we're here to bring in as many as we can.
Anybody got any questions for Julie while she's, uh, on a roll? Like, we're gonna, we'll try to kind of get to item six and then we'll have a broader, broader conversation there. But next, uh, we can look, is Marine gonna take over from here?
I can, but that's a hard act to follow. So I will do my best. So based on the numbers that, um, well, Barry Dunn and the Park District shared as far as um, capital construction costs, what these would run for these facilities, if we're, we're attempting to try to find solutions, funding solutions, um, to fund as much of this capital cost as possible, but within the existing sales tax rate that we currently have. So at the last joint meeting that we had, um, we were proposing a possible extension uh, of the existing three quarter percent Alara Center sales tax, um, past that current sunset of twenty twenty-nine, um, to help, uh, fund these facilities. Um, so at that time, we were estimating fifty to eighty million dollar capacity, uh, bonding capacity with that existing uh, sales tax. So what we've been working on and working through different scenarios, um, things that we've had to consider as we're looking through all the options there. Um, not only looking to fund an additional bond for these, uh, capital costs related to these facilities, but also we still have the existing debt, um, that matures in twenty twenty-nine in the Alara Center facility, as well as continuing to fund the capital needs of the Alara Center. Um, and also other infrastructure needs that we have as, as far as the city and, and having that under consideration. All at the same time, we need to make sure we keep our bond coverage, um, at that one point three five, um, that we're, um, required to with those existing bonds. So the most challenging part when we've been looking through this has been that time period, that time crunch, um, between now and twenty twenty-nine, when we're still carrying that, that debt load on that existing facility. Uh, so in working through that, we were looking at a solution of, okay, to, to do this in the most efficient way as far as cost. Um, if we phase in, um, I think George referred to a phase in approach, but phase in over two bond issuances, a thirty million dollar bond. And then two years later, a fifty million dollar, uh, dollar bond, getting us to a total capacity of the eighty million. Um, and, and that is, is the, the latest scenario that we're looking at. As you can see, um, based on those costs, you're still looking at a funding gap, um, but it gets us, you know, in the higher end of that range that we're, that we're looking at. Um, if you wanna, um, go to the next slide, John.
Excuse me.
Yep.
That funding gap is, can you do the math on me for that? It's eight, it's a hundred and it's a hundred and twenty million minus her, the eighty million or a hundred and ten million minus the eighty million. Gives us the funding gap of thirty million dollars. That's not the entire funding gap. That's just for the facilities. If we use all of the bonds for the facilities, correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
Well, that's and funding the Alara Center capital and
through twenty twenty-nine.
And future capital. So we'll go through that.
Thank you.
So in looking at the Alara Center impact, um, we have those debt service payments that continue through the end of twenty twenty-nine. Looking at also, um, needing to fund the current C I P, um, out to twenty twenty-nine as has been presented with budgets. Uh, but also looking at the allocation to fund future capital needs. Um, you know, we, we said in that last meeting, three to four million. What we have in here is three point seven five million, um, to, to properly fund ongoing, um, capital needs on an average for that facility going forward. In doing so, in this scenario, we're using that reserve that had been set aside for future capital to help with that transition, um, to get us through that, that time crunch of, of meeting those, that bond capacity. Um, when we're looking at, um, I, I said it before about infrastructure needs and, and sales tax. Um, we do look at, and you know, the community need of a facility like this. And, and Julie went through the numbers on there as far as, um, direct and, and economic impact on it. And, and we look, if, if, if sales tax is used for this, we see it as a driver of economic impact and, and growing. Um, that sales tax that will help all funds, that sales tax, um, helps the funds such as streets, street capital projects and parks. And really looking at sustainability as far as a community and keeping those families here and, and not only keeping people here, but bringing others here to help for those events to help grow that pot of money. Do you want to go to the next slide? So in this, in this analysis, we do have some assumptions that we continue to look at. Right now, that three quarter percent sales tax generates roughly ten million dollars, a little bit more. And we were, uh, looking at a scenario of a two percent growth on that, um, with that revenue stream. It would, uh, fund, uh, that, uh, ongoing allocation that we spoke of for capital needs of the Alara Center, as well as a new debt service payment, uh, that's estimated at six point eight million. That's based on a six percent, um, bond interest rate over a thirty-year time period. Um, with, like we said, those two, um, phased in bondings. Um, but in this scenario, what we're looking at is although they'd be issued separately, they'd have the same end maturity date to stay within that thirty-year from the initial, from that initial bond. Uh, and then also setting aside, uh, some dollars for capital needs of the new facility, um, of one and a half million growing, um, with that. Um, you do project out a, a positive cash balance through that thirty-year sunset. Um, what we do look at doing and, and we had mentioned using reserve to help fund through this and then having that ongoing allocation, um, for Alara Center capital. Um, but we see that as, you know, the two really working together to fit that community need, um, going forward. But we still, um, we still have work to do. Um, Todd's gonna go through some of, um, of the next steps. But we're looking at some additional, uh, scenarios as far as just that timing as if even a one year, um, you know, if we push it out one year, for instance, it'll increase that bonding capacity due to that coverage of restriction that we have. Also looking at, you know, can we support an argument? And I think we can, to show a three percent, um, sales tax growth rate to see if that would help um, leverage additional capacity there. And also just look at different varying interest rates in our changing environment and, and how that impacts the numbers. So that's all of some of the additional scenarios that we're, we're currently working toward. I'm gonna turn it over to Todd.
So what we talked about is, uh, we talked about how do we help close that thirty million dollar gap? Um, so what we, I reached out to, um, a handful of firms, both architectural and construction management firms, mostly locally and regionally. And so what, what the city is proposing to lead, um, for a nominal fee, um, among some select local firms to look at that construction cost and working with Pat and his team as consultants, so to look to refine those, uh, numbers. Cause if you look at those numbers, there are contingencies on there to try to figure out how could we construct that within this timeframe and what would those, um, more specific costs be? And so to take over the next few months to really refine with those construction costs, we would look at, uh, work with our local construction management community and also architectural community. Pay them a reasonable amount to really work with their estimators in looking at with those cost estimates. And we would engage, like I said, with Pat and his team on that so that we can come back to what we think are really refined numbers, uh, to move forward with. Um, Marine has talked about this. We're working with our, our financial analysts and our bottom council on, on looking at different financial scenarios for us to, to move this forward. As part of the sales tax will be, uh, a secondary thing that we're gonna work on on behalf of the city Grand Forks. And then working with, um, um, with the Park District and working with, um, the local groups because, uh, Pat, you said it. These are regional rates and I think that's code word for our user groups are not used to paying regional rates, but you can chart, you can build really great facilities and charge the same. Um, otherwise everyone's gonna end up in back, um, going to Fargo to their facility. So what we want is to create great facilities. Have every, all the users pay reasonable rates, but they're likely gonna be more than what they are today, but however, they're gonna be really great facilities um, on the construction side. And they're gonna keep people here, as Julie said, um, with our better quality of life. We're gonna attract and retain people and it's been driving our sales tax. It really helps everybody, um, in our community. And then the final one is, um, uh, timeline and since we're the paid help, we can talk about timelines that we would ask for the policymakers is that we think we have all this momentum going forward, um, in the community. And these are things that people want now, is that we should really target and really work hard to put in front of the voters, a, um, a vote yet this fall or early winter. So when I, I think of October, November, uh, timeframe, um, to put this in front of the, the voters. If we can refine the cost, have a funding source, have the user groups be on board and have the community on board over the next few months, that we should target in the August timeframe. If that all comes together, we would like to come back to our city council and ask them to move forward with the sales tax initiative. Um, that will lead to an October, November vote and generally you want at least sixty days in advance. Um, to a vote. And so that would, that would mean probably in around that August, September, we would, if everything went well and we had the city council approval, we would ask for a profile of appearance and have a special election uh, sometime in around November of twenty-three. I think if we miss that timeframe to the end of the year, we're likely out in every year um, to go to the voters. And, um, I think in this case, time is not our friend and, and we have President Armacost here and one of the, um, things that they're interested in, in the school district are interested in is the net pool because they have to make some decisions too. So I think it's important for us to move, um, with some urgency, uh, to get back to you as policymakers, both from the Park District and, and the city council. Um, with that, mayor, I think that's our presentation. We have pretty much.
Thank you. I'm gonna open up. I just wanted to say a few comments first. I think like anything else big, I mean, it takes a lot of work to get to the finish line on these things. You gotta go through a lot of different scenarios. There's a ton of work behind the scenes, the city staff, the park. When we get to the table today, you've got months of work and tons of hours that have already gotten into it. It's gonna take a lot more. Uh, so everyone needs to be aware of that on the front end. I, I would say that, that I don't think there's appetite for, uh, property tax increase. So I think we have to work as hard as possible on the sales tax side. If you look at Fargo, um, the facilities that they're building, they're using mills. So the Park District down in Fargo is using those. They're raising property tax. The mill value in Fargo is seven hundred and fifty thousand. They've got more building value within their city. So as the, you increase one mill, you get three times the amount of money you get here. But they're asking their, their taxpayers on property tax to fund similar types of facilities here. We're looking at using the sales tax. So the beauty of that is as you drive more people in for tournaments, they're helping fund the thing in the future. So that's why we see the sales tax is a huge benefit. Uh, you know, we've done a lot of work at the Alara Center too, and we see the benefit there and a benefit there. Um, and we want to keep that, that going. I mean, that's been a tremendous asset of the last twenty years, but the last, you know, five years, certainly it's exploded since the big management team here took it to the next level. Um, so I see this as the next step. So I, I mean, I'm really excited about it and if we all work together, I think we can get to the finish line on it. So with that, um, those are the fun parts. We gotta get people talking. So let's, uh, Tim, why don't you just give some, some of your initial thoughts? Now you were kind of looking at the next step phases and seeing interest rates, sales tax growth. Timing, different things like that, but any other general thoughts that we'll open up to it?
Yeah, obviously, like, as you mentioned, I would see a big project. There's, there's many things that have been worked on and looked at. First of all, I want to commend Pat and, and his team at Barry Dunn. You know, we've, we've had this talk in this community for many, many, many years, but it's been tough, right? And to put statistics behind it, one of the things that I look at is, um, not only did eighty percent of the people have responded to the survey, say they're in favor of extending the sales tax. You know, most, a vast majority of those, seventy, seventy-five percent of them said, we want to do both facilities. It wasn't just, oh, we want turf, oh, we want courts, or no, we want aquatics only. So that goes to show what this community really wants. And, and I find that very exciting because I think that's gonna make everyone come to the other to get this project done. Yes, we have a big gap, but at the same time, I think we can get it done and, and, uh, obviously we've got lots of good people in this room and in this community to, to help with that. So appreciate it again. Like I said earlier, it's been great working with the city and, and look forward to getting this through the finish line.
Sounds good. Well, President Sandy? I'm gonna hand it over to you next.
Um, yeah, I, uh, yeah, but thanks for all the hard work. Certainly it would be great if we had these sorts of facilities. Uh, being the skeptical person that I am, I'm concerned that there's a lot of rental revenue in here. And if the rental revenue doesn't come through after the facilities are built, we have a considerably difficult situation. So, um, Marine, I intend to give you a call and I can visit with you about all the finances. So I'd like to learn more about your numbers. But I'm certainly excited about the opportunity to try to work together.
And I will see our numbers just hit the capital side of it. Um, this does not, um, the sales tax conversation didn't look at the operations.
Right. There's a half a million dollar shortfall, which is two full mills, which is, I think to George's point, a significant property tax increase. And so we have to come up with funding to build it. We also have to figure out how we're gonna get ongoing revenue to make.
I think, uh, just looking at the numbers, I do think that there's a lot more, you know, it's a lot more firm on the expenses. I think the revenue side's a plus or minus. I think the expenses are, are pretty well dialed in. We're looking at regional numbers that they looked at for the revenue side, but uh, you know, those have to come to fruition. The expenses are probably harder, um, numbers. So I think that's something to consider, definitely.
Yeah, I agree. The, uh, the revenue numbers, um, on the operation maintenance side, I think that's one thing the partnership would want to do is we have visited with user groups a few times, but I think the goal would be to reach back out to them once more. Um, connect with them and talk about what those proposed rates would be and see what their appetite is. We need to get the scheduled hours and, um, times that they would want, but uh, with those rates, are they still wanting that same amount of time that they had previously asked for? So I think that would be another step the partnership can do is to make sure that we've got the best numbers we possibly can. We wanna, um, minimize the subsidy, obviously, but same time we want to maximize the participation. We don't wanna not have kids participate because it's too expensive either. So try to walk that fine line and balance that out.
Pat, a quick question for you. You talked about the revenue numbers, you looked at seventy percent capacity on the expense size. How much of those numbers are variable and how much of them are fixed? If we get to closer to capacity, is there enough fixed costs in there where revenues can start to get closer to that or is that gonna increase?
Revenues will swallow up a lot of that because, I mean, you're, yes, you're gonna have the lights on, a little more hours, slower go up. Um, but it kind of goes up as a revenue does, but revenue will, will catch that. Your staffing stills the same, you know, it's based on amenities, square footages. Your staffing stills the same, you know, it's based on amenities, square footages and then usage. You're just like the pool. It's, you're going to pay that pump twenty-four, seven year round. And, and the more bodies you can put in, in the pool to, to help fund that, obviously, the less it's going to be. Couple of things that, that I want to bring up is the difficult question is to walk in and ask any user group, particularly with youth, what are you willing to pay? The question to ask them is what are you willing to pay for this facility? Because it's an either or. You can still play like you are right now at the rates you're paying. But this is going to cost a lot more money. And, and the idea isn't for us to put fees down there to make it look like you're going to make money. That's, that's, I want my name on that. But I'll put my name on this and most youth groups, and I think Julie said it best, it's an industry where parents are paying out the wazoo for, for this. Now what you figure out is how do we get every kid in there through a scholarship program is what I'm familiar with. So you don't turn anybody down. And the rentals then can, can also grow those programs because we did programs at about probably sixty-five percent to make room for some of that group. So the programs are the ones that, that you can come in that aren't rentals. But rentals are really where you do make the money because these are the groups that are going to run their own tournaments. And the economic impact isn't just people coming in. It's keeping your, your teams now that are going elsewhere every weekend and spending their tax dollars in Fargo and, and in Minnesota. They're spending them now here. They might not stay in a hotel, but they're generating dollars for your own and not for somebody else's. And then the last thing I want to say is do not think that just because the survey said eighty percent said they'd vote for it. It's not a slam dunk. You treat it like it was twenty. Because I've seen too many that I don't need to vote. It's, it's going to pass and it doesn't. So that's my last.
I was going to mention, you did bring up a good point. I was thinking of too, you know, you've got a sports schedule, you know, you're going to, you're already going to travel. Maybe you've got four tournaments right now. You got to leave town for all four, like swimming. I mean, they're going to travel for all their tournaments right now. Having one day you're staying at home, you're, you are spending more money in your own community or at least not spending it somewhere else. That's probably not showing up in your economic development numbers, but something to consider. You know, if you're going to Fargo every weekend for volleyball, suddenly two of those weekends you're staying here. That's a big difference.
Put your gas money into this facility.
There you go.
There's your campaign.
Figure out how that works.
I just wanted to comment on the, on the user groups and the fees and things. Just so when this comes out in a week or so, when people look at fees and say so-and-so is paying this amount of money is what we're projecting. Again, these are just projections like we've been talking about. This is saying the user groups have contacted us. We've reached out to them. We've called them with a survey, followed up with them, trying to find out, you know, when would you use a facility? How many tournaments do you anticipate you're running? And then based on the fees that we came up with, this is what that number comes to. Now, again, that's not saying they're going to pay that or they have to pay that. But like Pat said, if we're going to have a facility, some of those fees are going to be, have to be paid. Let's say one of the groups said, well, we're not going to use it that much. We've got to cut down on how much we're doing it. Does that mean we can fill in the turf time or something else with other rentals? But that would have to be done. But again, I don't want the user groups to think that all of a sudden now we're expecting that this is what they're going to pay. We have some that may be using it for ten months out of the year. Well, in that case, maybe we would discount that fee a little bit because of the amount of time they're using it. So those things can adjust those numbers, but it's more so the user group see, okay, you can see how much this building costs. You can see right now we're at two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to the loss. If we're here, then that stays there. If we don't get that, that makes it more difficult. So again, I just, I don't want the groups to think we're expecting that, hey, this is what it is. That'll be conversation and that's why we want to follow up with them again.
I don't want to scare anybody. We're at a thirty million dollar gap right now. We're, we're obviously trying to tighten that. And then we've got a way, a whole one to talk about as well. But this was originally brought up. We've got a children's museum in town that we're trying to find a way to get that funded across the finish line too. Because facilities, you know, both physical facilities, but having a facility, you know, like that's been sorely needed in this community too. So I don't want, at least for the city side and the Park District side, as we talk about this in the future, that's still something we've got to sort of keep on the table as we're trying to bring these numbers closer together. That's something we've committed to trying to find a way to get done too. So hope we don't scare anybody off. We're already at thirty million.
A few, few questions. One, you know, I think sales tax is absolutely the way to, to pay for this. Is there the opportunity to look at hospitality specific sales tax increase? And you know, is that even something that's, that's possible?
Will be maxed out or is there more? It's available to the people. In fact, we're, something city council would want to include in, you know, on the ballot.
Sure.
Just so you know what that means in terms of dollars, a quarter percent restaurant lodging sales tax right now generates roughly six hundred thousand.
So, so the other piece of that is that as you look through, you know, every square foot that we build, we're creating, you know, an asset that we have to maintain and operate and it's just going to keep snowballing. And I look at what we have with the Alara Center and, you know, I fully agree that extending the sales tax makes sense. We need to make sure, one, we don't ignore the, the needs of the Alara Center. And two, did we think about during planning any, you know, I hate to say like synergies, but like, you know, there's, there's rooms in the Alara Center that I would say could hold a pickleball court. You know, can we buy a pickleball thing? Can we, can we use spaces and pay the Alara Center and reduce our, our, our cost? I mean, if we could go through these exercises, reduce the cost by ten, fifteen percent. If we could find some spaces that could go into the Alara Center and take the money that would have been spent building something to just pay them, can we then close the gap and, and thirty million becomes five and then we're ready to go?
I think everything's on the table as far as trying to, to fill that gap. I think the easy button, Anna's here, so she might be able to talk to that. But Ken's here, he's on the list. The breakout spaces, you can put pickleball in there easily.
Yeah, I don't know what the ceiling height requirement is. I mean, that'd be a hard, that's your question. But we're here and we're in support of the project and we're excited about it. So I think any way that we fit in or can help with synergies, you know, we're, we're definitely, we want to put everything on the table as well.
Yeah, I think it's long-term solutions. So I mean, if we're going to have some option like that, it needs to be there and be permanent. I think that would be a consideration. But I think the easiest, the easy button, I think the first step is, is talking to some of the local firms, construction wise. You know, they might have some ideas that, that could, could really, you know, bring those numbers into check. And I think that's a great way to start. If you know what your, your gap is and you've got that more refined, it's a little bit easier to figure out what you've got to build.
I think kind of going off of that, the golf simulator, I just don't want the city to build a golf simulator and put another ground parts business out of business. Because we already have.
It wasn't the same. It wouldn't be the same. All the trash that was interested.
So the twenty thousand dollar income from concessions from that, is that the percentage we would get? Because the golf simulator would run the concessions?
Yes. Yep. The twenty thousand would be prominent because profit share or not.
Profit share, yes. They'd run a pretty extensive cafe in there, open it up to the inside of the building, take care of all of it, just pay a gross percentage.
That would be that number that we're looking at there because I would imagine one weekend you're going to bring in tens of thousands.
So they're, you're going to be using the concession income to pay for their share of the facility?
Say that again?
They would have a lease.
So they're going to, they're going to be leasing the?
Well, that's how it's figured out.
Okay, so I would suggest that those finances don't matter out there in our favor because I mean, if they can do twenty grand in a weekend, they would be taking home a half a million dollars themselves on revenue and we would be getting twenty thousand annually.
Well, I think that that number is just a place maker. It's the profit share is going to be a percentage. It's going to have to get negotiated.
So it hasn't been negotiated yet?
Well, they haven't. And that's why we have the two options there with them being with all kinds. They don't sign them. Not lying, we don't.
How do you come up with twenty thousand dollars then? I'm, I'm not trying to grill you guys on the numbers. I, I hear what you're saying. To me, the twenty thousand dollars seems incredibly low.
Very conservative and it would be a place maker that if they were to back out and you ran your own, then you got the expense side and the revenue side. And tournaments is really about all you, all you get during the week. There's not much. There's some bending, which you just like the rugged choice.
That could be a partnership. I mean, talking about the Alara Center, that they do that every day. That could be a great partnership. If they're at the concessions, they're going to figure out a way to maximize that. And that might be something we should have some follow-up just to see, but Anna's team and the Alara Center amongst other things. So Tricia, knock them out.
So the, the Alara sales tax extension, was any of that money going to go to the children's museum?
That's what I just talked about earlier. So we, you know, right now we're mainly focusing on these two facilities in this conversation, but it's still something that we need to do.
So the thirty million shortfall?
Would be, you'd have to add to that.
Okay. And then my last one was the Rust Ed Center in West Fargo. I don't know if everyone's been there. It's a, a pretty awesome facility. But I've noticed this year that they repurposed, so their, their turf just now has blow up toys or those things. One room is being used as storage. I just don't want us to, to not design it correctly the first time.
I think the lessons learned there was the facility, it wasn't large enough to have, you know, the sports stuff entered that they wanted to. And it kind of left a, a space that wasn't usable. So I think that's, you know, the whole point of getting Barry Dunn in there to make sure that we're sizing these things appropriately. That's why we also have to be careful if we have to downsize the thing that we're not moving its usability. Pat, go ahead. This is free flowing.
George, remind me, how much do we subsidize the indoor hockey rinks? It's about six hundred, seven hundred thousand dollars a year.
Yeah, all, all three areas.
So I mean, then we spend that. It's great. Hockey's great, a great community event. A lot of people active, but we spend that and no one looks an eye. I'm spending seven hundred thousand dollars a year sporting or hockey facilities. So I think the rest of the community is now saying, where's the love for the rest of the sports? You know, if you can spend that much in hockey, we set aside five hundred thousand dollars a year to operate all these other sports. But granted, that is a concern. We're going to deal with, you know, five hundred thousand dollars a year.
Breaking me and Tim's are here, but I mean, you still agree.
I know you guys are hockey guys.
I agree with you on that front. I think in this town, it's been really easy to get things funded when it comes to hockey. And it hasn't been so when it comes to children's music and other sports. And I think we got to start making change in that a little.
And, and there's been a need for so many years. I'm lifelong resident, grew up here, kids are active, football, basketball and what have you. But obviously, this past winter really set the stage of how important an indoor facility is and the need for it. You know, I think the survey speaks overwhelmingly, you know, the survey, the age of the people supported.
Dan, you got something to add?
Yeah, a couple of questions. Were the capital construction costs based on twenty twenty-three dollars or were they inflated to twenty twenty-six?
Twenty twenty-three.
Yeah. So I, I think as we look at this, we'd have to look at when we would actually, what the cost will be at the time the building is complete.
All of it. You're closer, you get to twenty-nine on your, on your already sales tax capital O and M.
Then we'll have to look, the sales taxes in twenty twenty-nine, we're going to have to look at that funding plan between now and then. Because I'm very much in favor of it. I think it's a great project for the community. It's just being real, realistic about how we look to address those costs. I think in that, if you just looked at timeline again, so if you had a November election, say it's successful, you would then say, you would probably do somewhere it pays for design services before then. But you'd have a year of design at least, I would assume. And I would, so that's why you probably at the earliest would bid this in the winter versus early construction. Early, sometime in twenty, late twenty-four and probably a two-year construction. So you're probably talking twenty-six, twenty-seven to get this, these two facilities covered. So when we start talking in today, this is how you get old in life, right? We're already talking twenty twenty-seven as we talk about today of when can these facilities be online? And so if you move it a year, pretty soon, if you start moving things a couple of years, you're going to be in twenty thirty. You've got to, you've got to look at your own life about where you're going to be in twenty thirty.
Keep in mind, I mean, inflation, as inflation goes up, your sales tax revenue is going to go up too. I mean, unless you get in the scenario of last couple of years where building costs obviously might be much bigger than general inflation. If that happens, to get, you know, that continues, that's where you have more issues. But your revenues are going to go up obviously with your expenses.
And all I want to do is make sure that we have good accurate data. Because also I, I believe the Inflation Reduction Act, at least what we're looking at in my project, is huge. The incur from that act alone, I think has millions of dollars of potential benefit to the project. So we, we need to look at what those opportunities are within that act. I'm working with a consultant now, but we'll have meetings that I think may have bearing on what we're doing here, which should just be of value for what we're looking at. So, I mean, I just want to make sure the costs are accurate and we look at the best way we can do to get this funded. Also on the Alara's commission, we got to take a look from the commission's perspective to make sure that we're set for the future too. Because that building is also aging and there's a lot of replacement costs. That will be multiple times we'll have to replace roofs and all of that. So just so that we're, we're looking at the big picture as we're looking at the whole project.
I will just comment on the Alara Center. So, so Ken, we did include what was given to us from the Alara Center staff as far as long-term look at the CIP and Alara Center capital needs on those ten-year, twenty-year replacement items and annual amount. And then we put an additional amount in inflationary on top of that. So that's how we came to, it's their actual CIP built in through twenty twenty-nine. And then this annual average amount of three point seven five million that's built in to take care of the Alara Center.
Yeah, because I just want to take a closer look at that. There's things like parking lots that eventually have to be replaced that probably aren't in those numbers and some other things along the lines. We just want to make sure it's covered.
Cody, you always got a lot to say. What's your?
No, I think I agree with the board here, especially Tim's comments regarding future own and things like that. And I think that's the biggest step is the thirty million gap and running these facilities. I mean, a lot of times the park board has handed the keys to the facility and then they have to pay the maintenance costs. So I'm definitely in support of it, but I think we have some hurdles.
One more. The BMX track, isn't that a five-year temporary lease they have right now?
That's included. So some of the, the site costs, I think would be the biggest piece. That's included in moving, moving the BMX track. It's going to kind of switch and be a perpendicular to where it is. And it had some improvements mixed in there.
Where was it going to move after five years? Or was it possibly going to stay where it's at?
I think it would have likely stayed. You do have some expenses that have incurred there with asphalt and some infill infrastructure. Electric, electric poles. So I think that's been a benefit. And they're, they're trying to host nationals right now and other, you know, big type of events. They've got the longest, I don't know why I know so much about BMX. It is the longest track kind of in the Midwest region and it's, it's getting better by the days. So that's been pretty exciting. It was a very low cost for that to get done and it's bringing back many multiples on the economic sense.
They just went out today for a national event at that, at that venue.
Yeah, those can be hundreds of riders over numerous days and they generally travel families. So that's, that's a big, big deal.
Because I've got five hundred thousand dollar facility, so I imagine we'll get to like a hundred million.
The revenues are the same. That'd be a no-brainer, but I think.
It probably will flatten out.
Mayor, our plan is to be back here as soon as possible to this joint meeting with some financing plans and George and his team working on the operation plan. And hopefully have a more refined plan and then we will continue to work with Pat and, and your team through assistance. And we'll just have some local, your teams that will engage further and add some more horsepower and more local thinking on how we can get this project.
At what point, and we've obviously got a lot of people here that, I mean, we obviously need some more public input. You know, we've got all the public input to get to this point, but it'd be nice to get further input as they're seeing where this is playing out, what things are looking like. And I'd like to add that, you know, in the mix once we get, you know, the construction architects, you know, locally take a look at this.
There'll be a team of both between the Park District staff and, and our staff.
All right. Any other comments for, for this evening? I think it's, it's great to see some of those O and M numbers and because, like I said, to get things like this, it's a ton of work. Just have a meeting like this, a lot of hours got put into it and it'll be on point. If there's nothing else, do you want to motion adjourn? Our favorite council member adjourned her motion, she believes that, thinks the city. So we got a motion to adjourn the other second. Almost every seat, if I was saying.
Thank you.
Adjourned. Yep, thank you.